We're about ready to get started. There's a few guests, I guess. Thank you all for attending. Well, we start our meeting with the word of prayer and a pledge of allegiance. I'm going to ask the Ottawa woman Sheila Whitmore to lead us in prayer.
You'll bow with me. Our gracious Father, we thank you for the abundant blessings that you've given us. Lord, we just ask for your wisdom and guidance as we make decisions for this city that you've so graciously blessed us with. We just ask, Lord, that everything that we do be pleasing in your sight, and it's in your name that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will go on and call this meeting to order. Mr. Garrett, please call the roll.
Mr. Hawkins?
Here.
Mr. Grimes?
Here.
Mr. Pruitt?
Here.
Ms. Mel?
Here.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Whitmore?
Here.
You should have received copies of the May 26, 2015 minutes. Any additions, corrections, or motions to approve?
So moved.
Motion and second to approve. Discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Seven to zero. On the report of our standing committees, we'll go with community development first. Mr. Hawkins, I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item on this portion of the agenda is consideration for the airport department to apply for the Arkansas Department of Aeronautics grant. And Mr. Josh Zilks, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. This is simple, will be quick. Asking for permission to apply for the department, to the Department of Aeronautics for a grant to reimburse us through their program for the 5% that we spent under the 2011 AIP grant. That grant has been finished and closed. We've already spent this money, but the state will reimburse us, apply for this grant to reimburse us the amount $207,239.71.
Make a motion that we allow him to apply for this grant.
Second. Motion and second to apply for this grant to get a reimbursement of over $200,000.
Correct.
I'm sure our CFO, Tyler Winningham, would be very appreciative to have that money working for us rather than somebody else's pocket. Anyway, any discussion? If not, all in favor of approving this application for reimbursement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
Mr. Zilks, is the water off the levee yet?
As of Sunday.
As of Sunday. We like a dry airport. Very good. Next item, Mr. Hawkins, excuse me.
That's okay. Would you like to take it?
No, I'd go right ahead.
Oh, I thought you wanted to step in. Next item is consideration to accept the bid to purchase a street sweeper to be utilized by the street and engineering department, each one, and Mr. Vincent. See, you popped up on that one. I didn't know whether it was going to be you or Mr. Bell.
We need to keep our streets clean, and we got one bid for a street sweeper, $221,960. Unfortunately, we only got one bid, but it's been our experience, there's only really three suppliers that can provide this type of equipment. One's always high, so he never bids. We expected to get two bids, and we called the other guy and asked him what his price, or why he didn't bid, and he said he didn't bid because he just couldn't get his bid together in time. We asked him what he would have bid, and the price he gave us was within a few thousand dollars of this. So we believe this to be a good bid, and I recommend approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second for approval. It was put in the budget for about $200,000, if I'm...
That's correct, and I, if need be...
Which is an estimate always.
That's right, and I have a plan to make up the difference by selling scrap metal. My predecessor was a pack rat, and we have already, I guess he didn't pick up on that. Maybe he did. We've already sold about $9,000 in scrap metal, and we've got lots of equipment laying around. Then we've walked the site, and we figure we've got about $20,000 more in unserviceable equipment that we can sell to make up the difference if need be.
Well, very good. And a bid is what it is, so we have a motion and second. Any other discussion?
Yeah, how many of these do we have already?
We have two. One is well over a decade old. I think they're both near 10 years old. One's older than the other one, and the one, the older, well, I don't remember which one. One of them is a 1980s or 90s truck that was, and the body was replaced.
No, I really wouldn't worry. Inquiring about the age and stuff, I was just trying to find how many we had, and...
We have two, and one of them needs to be replaced.
Okay.
One's broke down most of the time.
That's correct.
That would be the one to be replaced, I hope.
Unfortunately, yeah, unfortunately, street sweepers are very fragile, and they tend to break down a lot.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes seven to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Very good. Next item, Mr. Mayor, is consideration to acquire right-of-way property and construction of an internal road for improvement and construction of the Dave Ward Drive and I-40 improvements. And Mr. Vincent, welcome back.
All right. This is, this is in regards to the Dave Ward Drive Highway Department project. We're all probably pretty familiar with that at this point. It's kind of linked in some way to the Sam's Colette development, and the project was originally scheduled to be bid this summer, but...
Actually, in April.
Was it originally April?
Originally shooting for April.
Yeah, I guess you're right.
And the right-of-way issue bumped it till the summer, and it may bump again.
Yeah, that's correct. It had, I believe it has bumped it again already. The original estimate with right-of-way was to have the bid letting in the summer, but that required right-of-way acquisition to happen at a very quick scale. As a matter of fact, the highway department was hoping that all of the property owners would donate the right-of-way. And there, at this point, there is, there is one major right-of-way holder that is a sticking point, and that is the Lewis property, which is the northeast corner of Amity and Dave Ward Drive. And Mr. Lewis is not happy with the price that the highway department has offered him, and is interested in negotiating, but the highway department doesn't want to negotiate because they want to try to get this thing pushed forward as soon as possible, so they've, they've said they're going to proceed to condemnation, which will delay the project. And it's not to the city's benefit to delay the project because we have, that's right, we have a major developer that is hinged upon this, this highway department project moving forward. The city has stepped in, the mayor's done a lot of the legwork on this. The city has stepped in to negotiate on behalf of the highway department with Mr. Lewis, and the agreement with, and the agreement with the aid of Salter Construction, or Salter Properties, rather. The agreement is that we will build a roadway leading from one of those roundabouts back to Amity Road on the north side, basically kind of cutting through his property.
We have an internal...
And there's a map.
Road drawing.
That's exactly right. On the next page, there's a map. If you remember, there's two roundabouts in the highway department project, so this would come off of the easternmost roundabout, which is the entrance into the Sam's Club Colette development. And so the northern leg would be the entrance into the Bill Lewis development. And anyway, so obviously, Mr. Lewis has interest in developing that property, and the agreement, the proposed agreement, rather, is that the city would build that road. Now, what we are going to ask of the highway department, in fact, we've already asked, we haven't had an answer back yet, is that the building of this road would count towards our $2 million match that we've given, we've guaranteed the highway department as a part of building this road, and then Mr. Lewis, in turn, will donate the property back to the highway department. They get all that right? On Dave Ward Drive. That's exactly right. The necessary right-of-way, not the whole property, obviously, the necessary right-of-way for the construction of the Dave Ward Drive project. Now, we have covered ourselves because we have the, we've not, we've not guaranteed paying anything more than the highway department would have paid for the property. And we'll pay up to that amount for the construction of this road, and then Mr. Lewis will pay the difference. Presumably, there will be a difference. I think that about gets it.
I think it does. Does everybody follow that?
No.
Okay, here's what, here's what we're doing. We had...
No, just from the map, if, we could just look at the map. Okay, which of the circles is which roundabout, and where's Dave Ward Drive? Because none of these are labeled.
Yeah, sorry. The Dave Ward Drive is the southern portion of the property, the very bottom, and both of those two circles at the bottom are the two proposed roundabouts on Dave Ward Drive, so the one...
Where does the highway come, highway exit ramp comes into which of these?
The one on the left.
Left.
One on the left.
That's right.
But we don't see that part. Okay.
We don't see any of the Lewis Crossing development. This is just the Bill Lewis property to the north, yeah.
Okay.
That other roundabout north on Amity that shows, that'll come out, what, about just south of that dealership?
Just north.
North, yeah.
North of the Kia.
About, yes, north of the Kia, just past on the northern side of the power lines, the big power lines coming through there, just north of that. I mean...
Actually, there's been, yeah, there's been, the most logical thing to do would be to put, there's a, there's a big power pole that holds those transmission lines, and the most logical thing to do would put the center of the roundabout where that power pole is, so the transmission line still has to be moved.
Kind of industrialized. Barium.
That's above my pay grade.
So the new road is, which one?
The new road is, let me just point to it.
The green line coming...
This is the new road right here. Can you see that?
So that's not Amity, that's...
No, Amity is over here.
Left side.
There's somewhat of a little road up through there into that substation.
There is, actually. The existing road, that this, the new proposed road would be on top of the existing road until the curve begins, and that, that leads, as you said, to the substation, and the purpose of that roundabout right there is that, we hadn't worked this out yet, this is very preliminary, but there have, we'd have to maintain access to that substation, so one option is to put a roundabout there, and then another road would lead to that substation. I think that's the intent of that roundabout on this drawing.
Everybody following now? Kind of got yourself oriented to the map? Okay. I think that open space is the Kia dealership, or no, actually, it's not the Kia dealership, it's the, it's the development just south of the Kia dealership. Kia dealership is between that opening on the left-hand side of the picture and the roadways that comes out.
That is the dealership.
That is the dealership.
I think that's right.
That's, it's the, it's the to-be-developed property between the Kia dealership and the roundabout is what's north of it, correct?
That's right.
Okay.
So somebody had shown interest in developing...
Well, the owner of the property is interested in developing it, and that's, that's what spurred this, is that we, I don't remember if we anticipated or he told us, but that was, that was the idea. We figured out that, we found out that he was interested, interested in developing, and we thought we might be able to come up with a mutually beneficial situation.
So what's the comparison in the cost of the two? What did the highway department offer him for his property, and what's it going to cost us to build the road?
Oh, I know that the, I know that the road will exceed the cost of what he's been offered for his property. I don't have a cost of the road yet.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Didn't he just...
That's a fair question. I don't know what the...
I think the offer now is somewhere in the $400,000 range for the property, the highway department appraisal, and I think there's a good support for a $700,000 to $800,000 value.
At least based on what our appraisals are further north.
Okay, so if we can't get the highway department to count this as part of our $2 million match, how do we pay for it?
I don't think we'll move forward if we can't get them.
That's, that's, that's part of this agreement is, is we have to get the highway department to agree to terms with us, and then they will, Bill Lewis will donate the property, the right-of-way needed for Dave Ward Drive, to us, and donate all the additional right-of-way needed for that internal road from when it starts curving all the way back over to Amity, and the roundabouts that are needed, because those roundabouts won't center up on Amity. It'll encroach over into his property because you can't encroach onto the interstate right-of-way. So it'll cheat back to the east. So he'll donate all of that, and then the, and then we will get credit, hopefully with the highway department, for the donation, our donation of the land for Dave Ward Drive to the highway department. And for that, we will build, take our money, and build a portion, whatever the portion of the road is, and whatever's left, the additional cost, Bill Lewis will pick up.
So we'd still have a $300,000 difference.
We still, and that's what may be the rub.
So where's the $300,000?
No. If that doesn't, if we can't get into a comparable, agreeable position number-wise, we won't go forward.
Okay, okay.
Now, that, that number is built in our major street project budget for central landing and the bus crossing and the south interchange.
Right, the $2 million is. Now, what I'm saying is if we get credit only for the value of the land we would donate back, that's $400,000. This project is going to cost us $700,000 or $800,000, so...
No, 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 that's, that's, that's...
Build.
They are, it's going to cost probably more.
It costs more than that. It would cost over a million, but Bill Lewis, we're only going to pay, the amount we will pay towards the construction will only be the amount that the highway department credits us for our in-kind match. That's the amount that we'll pay towards the construction.
They will pick up the rest.
They who?
Yes.
Bill Lewis.
On the internal road. The internal road's 1.3?
That was the, right, the, the Salter Properties drew this, and they came up with a 1.3 million dollar estimate.
That makes sense. What I was hearing was we're going to get credit $400,000, and this is going to cost $800,000, so I was trying to figure out.
And that could be, that could be true, but we are not paying the difference.
Right.
It's going to be $2 million to us either way.
Right, and I'm fine to have that 400 count as part of our 2 million.
Okay, what, where the, where the rub's going to come is down on Dave Ward Drive. The right-of-way, the highway department wants to pay Lewis $400,000 or so. Lewis wants something more in the range of $700,000, $800,000, at least based on our appraisals up for Commonwealth Commons. If we don't find a middle ground on that, this is, this is, this is dead in the water.
Okay.
Okay? Now, that being said, we can choose to bridge a gap between two numbers. Bill Lewis and the highway department can't get together, in essence, because we're the middleman on this, because there is some benefit that that internal roadway would serve for us. And let me just lay out some scenarios. Right now, the highway department has those two Dave Ward Drive roundabouts built at three lanes. Built. They won't need them at three lanes for a number of years, and they're going to be bondless salt flats in terms of spacious asphalt. It scares the bejesus out of us. We would much rather have an operational two-lane for as long as we can roundabout, to have something more akin to Hendrix College. By having that internal road lead directly, not down to where the interstate exit hits, the western roundabout, the left roundabout, but actually go internally directly into the Amity Road roundabout, that reduces, potentially reduces traffic on Dave Ward Drive and through those roundabouts, you know, particularly the interstate. And that's the one they're most sensitive about.
It's the one on the interstate.
Well, on the interstate. They don't want to back up traffic onto the main lanes of the interstate. So that does provide us more traffic flow options and pattern that could possibly reduce the impact on Dave Ward Drive. So there is a, there is a benefit to us. So while also, we're trying to work for a win-win, no-cost solution for us, we're getting a benefit from this in developable property, probably lower traffic counts because of the options on transportation. This is, this is potentially a big deal for us. But if we can't make the highway department help, the highway department and Bill Lewis bridge that gap...
And they'll just have to condemn it.
And they'll have to condemn it, and that delays the project.
Now, did you say the highway department wants to build a three-lane?
That's what's going to happen on Dave Ward Drive.
Okay.
Three-lane roundabouts, two of them.
And you don't...
And we've, we've thought it. We've tried our best.
But they're building it, right?
They are building Dave Ward Drive. The internal road, that dark green line through that map, is something that we would build partially with money we get credit for from the highway department, the other part paid for by the Bill Lewis group. Lot of moving parts here, but we won't, I mean, it won't cost us any more money unless we agree to accept it. And we're not saying we're going to right now. We're just saying we're trying to make this happen.
Yeah, so just to clarify, this is the, the approval of the council is the first step, and then the highway department must approve the in-kind match, and then the, all parties involved have to agree on what that price is, and if any of those things fall through, then it could either go to condemnation, or we could come back to the council for guidance.
I'd say let's work forward and try and get this thing worked out, because we've got developers ready to go, and we need to get this done yesterday.
They've got major money invested, and this is, of course, they, they were betting on the come, trying to get this done, you know, as quickly as they could. Right-of-way, once you get into purchasing right-of-way, the highway department has certain protocols they have to meet, and they don't cut corners on those protocols. So if this has to go to condemnation, and, you know, it slows it down, and it's bumped yet another bid letting for the highway department, so...
Well, Mr. Hawkins, if that's a motion, I'll second it.
That is a motion.
Yes, very good. Motion and second to enter into this conditional to finding an agreeable price for the land. Is that fair?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion and second. Discussion? No discussion? All in favor of approving this tentative agreement conditional on finding the agreement between all three parties? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes seven to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is consideration to accept the Johansson Group Engineering Market Study job titles and salary recommendations for the street and engineering department. And Finley, I'm going to let you go where you want to go with it, or if you want to have Ronnie come up and visit about it.
Start with this.
I'll let you start, Mr. Mayor.
If you don't mind, Mr. Hawkins.
I don't care at all.
What is driving this is that we have had... What is driving this is that we have had Mr. Hall's position open since he retired. We have had David Vondren's position open since he retired the first time, much less the second time. He didn't retire, I guess he, he found new employment. But we can't fill these positions. And part of the problem has been we're paying low salaries, that's historically been a problem for us. We've hired two engineers, one of them, there were three actually recently, him being one, uh, most recently. We hired one, because he was the only one that applied, who would take it. We hired another one who was a chemical engineer. And we hired Finley and Ronnie had to, had to suggest to him that he's gonna retire quickly. Which means it created a career ladder. What we're fighting against is not other municipalities, because a lot of other municipalities don't staff their own engineering departments, a lot of them don't. I think we've got a great situation here where we do, and I think we can show you a cost benefit to that, both in the field and at the finance office, I think we can show you that. But we're not hiring engineers competing with other cities, we're hiring engineers competing with the highway department. And that's where we're struggling, they've got a career with the highway department that has a career ladder of salaries and their salaries move up much quicker than ours do, ours don't really move up, in essence. So what we're trying to do here, and you know, Finley can, can explain it more, is create not a series of steps, but a series of different job descriptions so we can hire people in based on their qualifications and experience at different places. You don't automatically move from one to the next, except at the very starting position, when they're an engineering intern without their full PE yet. And then that is something of a, not really more of a step, it's more of a certificate, pay advancement type of thing, if you're gonna compare it to police and fire. So we're trying to do that, we're not trying to populate all those positions, but we're trying to have positions available so that we can offer this to our folks. And it's still below where the highway department will bring people in at, okay? We're having Ronnie stick around and do a lot of work for us, because there's nobody else to do it and we've got $22 million worth of street projects we're trying to pull together right now. One bid today. And that's not counting Stone Dam, not Stone Dam Creek, trying to finish Tucker Creek. That's not counting right-of-way acquisition for all the projects and negotiations like this, because it really wasn't me, thank you for saying that, but it really was me, it was more Ronnie and the street department. Right-of-way acquisition for the trails, then kind of running shepherd over the rest of the department in all of its projects and the engineering associated with that. Because all those individual projects that our crews work on, they don't go out there and just kinda guesstimate down the street line. That requires some level of engineering too. And by doing it in-house, that allows it to get it done quicker, more nimbly and flexibly, rather than having to look at it, know it done right, we're gonna keep this lady's tree here, not gonna touch that person's flower bed, we, we can't send it back and forth to Garver or Crafton Toll or any other engineering firm, nothing against those guys, and be as nimble as we can if we did it in-house. So we've got a good situation if we can fill the positions, and for a year now, we can't. Because our grades, pay scale's not built on municipalities, it's built on municipalities and it should be built on what the career competition is, and that's the highway department. So that's what's, that's what's driving this.
Yeah, I got a question when you get there.
Absolutely, and that's a good time to open it up.
Yeah, okay, you're saying that we've had these positions open and we can't get anybody to work in these positions because of the salary and we've advertised this?
We've had interviews.
And nobody wanted it because of the money?
Nobody wanted it.
I mean, we're, we're working with it. That's hard to believe, okay, now what position is he in? I thought he was taking Ronnie's position.
I think there was a, yeah, I think there was a, just to clarify, yeah. The vacant positions are David's old position, Ronnie retired, I filled Ronnie's old position, so my old position is the other vacant position.
So which of the three are the ones listed?
That's what I was gonna say, what are the three positions on what we have here that you've had problems filling?
Well, they're, the current titles for those positions are project engineer, staff engineer, and traffic engineer.
So which of.
I see traffic engineer.
So which of the.
Well.
Which of these three are vacant?
On the list.
On the list that we have.
I think a more accurate thing to say is I have three vacant engineering positions.
This is the new.
But this is what you're asking us to appear.
Yeah, which, which.
This is the new ones, right?
Right, right, that's what I'm asking.
New job, new job titles.
Right, so which of these three are vacant?
Which we may not populate.
So these three, it shouldn't be but two, because you fill one, am I right?
Okay.
Well, we have, we have three vacant positions.
Yeah.
Here's what, here's what we're doing, folks, we're not creating new positions.
That's why I'm asking.
We're not.
We know that, we're asking which two are.
Which of the three vacancies are these?
What we're doing here is trying to create a number of positions, we're gonna populate three of them.
That's why I'm asking, which of the three?
So which ones, which three?
Yes.
A lot of those are gonna be dependent on what skillsets we can bring in. You can answer the question.
Which three do you want to advertise?
Which three are you talking about?
Yeah.
Well, the way the majority of municipalities would do this is they would advertise for a position and they would fill the position with the candidate that they have, that's the best candidate. And then the salary, and then the position that that candidate fills would be based on that person's skillset.
Which three on here do you need?
I don't know which three I'm gonna get to apply. The three that apply, when I get, if I get three people that apply, I will select the three of, the three of those positions that most accurately meet.
Okay, let me, let me.
Do this, Finley, Finley, just a second, a second.
All right.
Do this, just answer if you could pick.
If I could pick.
If you could find exactly who you would want.
Yeah, that's fair.
Who would they be?
Let me ask, let me ask.
It may not be that way.
Which three position was vacated? Can we do that, let's do it like that?
Yes.
Now, you wanna do it?
I can, I can.
Answer it any way you want to.
That's what I wanna know, okay, you took Ronnie Hall's position.
That's correct, that vacated traffic engineer.
Okay, that's traffic engineer, that's one.
Okay.
What's this?
David Vondren left.
What was his position?
Staff engineer.
Staff engineer, okay, now we got one more, what was that?
Okay, we created a position around the time that Mr. Hall left called project engineer, and that's the third one.
Okay, when you say we, who are we talking about, we created a position?
Well, it was, it was discussed that that, it was discussed for some time that that position needed to be created. The discussion was that we needed an engineer on staff with the city.
I'm just saying, who was the we?
Uh, it was my recommendation at the, the beginning of the 2015 budget that that position be placed in the budget, and it was.
So you approved it?
But you're saying it was a project engineer, there's no project engineer on this list?
That's correct.
Okay.
Now, I could guess at what the most accurate translation would be. And that would probably be a senior civil engineer, would be my guess.
So let me ask another way.
Yes.
We have three approved positions in the 2015 budget that are unfilled.
That's correct. Now, I will say, I don't expect to fill all three of those positions. I don't even have enough offices to fill all those, all three of those positions. Uh, I need one right now. And if Mr.
Hang on, hang on a second.
Okay.
Mr. Grimes, go on and finish your question.
I'm sorry.
Since you're on the roll.
No, that, that was pretty much it, but now, when, when Mr. Hall finally does retire from his part-time job, will, will you need another person to replace him? Or are you, would these three cover, well, I don't know, this is kind of ambiguous, you.
I understand your question.
About trying to fill what you get, but let me ask you this, if, if Mr. Hall quit tomorrow, do we then need four people?
No, three.
Okay.
This, this anticipated that, so basically we're getting.
Right.
That's what I thought, you anticipated him being gone and filling it with.
Two, yeah. His position in a, in a second.
I got, I got another question. What price did you put in on the budget for these salaries?
Uh, the, there was a salary survey done, well.
Based on the old salary scales.
Yeah.
Okay, can I find out what the price is?
I can tell you, I can tell you pretty close if you'll accept within $1,000.
Okay. Traffic engineer.
Traffic engineer, I believe, was around 72-ish. Staff engineer was 67 and change, I think traffic engineer was 72 and change.
It was, it was actually 73, 80, 79.
Okay, thank you very much. And project engineer was between those two, it was in the low 70s. It was 71 and change, I believe.
Got a question?
Yes, sir.
The Johansson Group study that, you know, you had done, what, what did that cost?
I can't.
Isn't that the third one that we've had?
This, this was.
We did, we did the main one, then we did the one.
A follow-up.
The extra one.
Money, so we did another one and then they did this one?
It wasn't just them describing with the money, it was the whole city, there was a number of departments that requested review. So we did, we did do a review that was more comprehensive. This one was, what was it, Lisa?
I don't think I've seen the bill.
It was how much?
780, she thinks.
Less than $1,000.
Yes, than $1,000, yes.
Okay, okay.
So, I think it's less than $1,000.
And then, can I make sure I understand? So in addition to the raising the salaries of the three vacant positions, this proposal is also to raise everybody else's salaries?
No.
I just, I'm trying to make sure.
There are two people that this salaries proposal would affect.
Okay.
Finley, because if you're gonna raise the people that are working under him, you've gotta raise him comparably to a degree. And then Jack Branscombe, who was the engineering intern. He would fit into this, no one else, this was only the engineering, pre-engineering positions that we looked at. So there's two.
There's no intern.
Of current salary.
Finley, I came by and visited with you today about this.
Yes, sir.
Would you tell the rest of the council what you could live with? You had talked about, if I could get some people in, we wouldn't specifically have to move you as far as this thing talks about moving, can you, can you do that?
Yeah, well, what I, I think what I, what you're referring to is, the comment I'd made to you was that the, the memo that you're looking at has a proposed number. And that number is proposed based on the Johansson Group's proposed number. And that was, the reason that's a proposed number is because of the system we have right now that pays every title the same regardless of who fills that title. The one-step system, basically. What I'd said was, if we adopted a range rather than just one title, I would fit within the range, which would mean that I wouldn't get a raise. But that would, that would be the, an alternative would be to adopt a range for each title rather than just one salary.
Okay, how long have you worked there?
At the City of Conway?
No, in this, this title you got now?
About a year.
Okay, what's your salary?
86 something.
And you, if, this would raise you to what?
Uh, well, I, that would, I have two titles right now, city engineer and director. So you could make me the city engineer and acting director, or you could make me the director and the acting city engineer.
Oh, tell me what that would raise you to.
It would be up to you.
99 or 95 to you.
Can I just ask him?
It's just right there on the page, sir.
Well, I just wanna know, okay?
I just told you.
90, 95, 251 to 99, 999. If the, if the proposed numbers were approved.
But talk about the range, go back and talk about the range if you would. No, I know, but I mean, I had a visit with Finley this afternoon about this. And I want you to tell them what you told me.
Sure, yeah.
And you just, and you just said it basically a minute ago.
Right, that the, if the range was adopted rather than just one salary, then presumably my salary would be set by the mayor, I would presume, or maybe the council, I'm not sure exactly how that would work. And all the other salaries would be set by me at your approval. Uh, and if we did that, it would provide flexibility for the council to do whatever they wanted to with those salaries within that range.
So here's what, here's what I understood from my conversation this afternoon. It would not affect Finley as much individually, but would allow us to set salaries or set a range for people that we could possibly bring in here. Here's what I learned today, I learned that the Arkansas Highway and Transportation Department is the largest employer of engineers in the state, I believe that's correct. And their salary ranges are higher than ours are, but that's who our competition is. We have two major projects that we've got to have some engineering help on. We've got 21, over $21 million of bond money that we've got to, that we've got to get ready to go, got to get projects ready to go, so we can get some commercial nodes cranked up and working as quickly as possible. Having said all of that, I did, and I know Mr. Hall is gonna come out of his seat now at me, but I did at least throw this into the conversation, is there some way that we can get some help from Garver or from Crafton Toll on a per-project basis?
I think that's a fair question and it deserves an answer, because there is a huge difference in that. If you were to get your calculator out, Mr. Hall's last salary is $85,000 roughly, you're, you're working on a contract hourly basis right now for that. You divide that by your full-time hours, annual hours.
Oh, I understand.
You're at $42 an hour.
I understand.
Okay.
And I know that we're looking at probably $200 an hour.
For him?
Yeah, yeah.
You know, granted, they've got overhead built in and cost of labor and, you know, everything like that. But what we're being billed for by Crafton Toll, or not Crafton Toll, Garver, I think's doing the work for us, so what we're being billed for, at the lowest level they're billing, that engineer, not everybody else that reviews and oversees and all the other things that are part of the responsibilities and job descriptions, the lowest level they're billing at $96 an hour.
Okay, I understand.
So it's a much more expensive thing and it's not as nimble. You will not be able to get the feedback we need for engineering on a as-built basis that we currently do if we push all of our engineering off to a, to a private firm.
And, and Finley told me all of that, so, so I had, I had heard all that, but I'm glad, I'm glad that you, you shared that with the rest of the council, because they, they needed to hear that.
Oh, because it seems like a great idea.
Yeah.
To privatize things, but government sometimes does it cheaper than private business.
I understand, but we also have to keep in mind that we have two projects that we've got to, I mean, we've got to get done, and I don't know where we are on any of them.
It's really too late to hire a consulting firm to do any of the projects that you're talking about. We've got, Garver is designing already about half of the, of all of the Central Landing stuff and we're designing the rest of it, and we're just too far along to conceivably hire somebody to do the rest, if that's what you mean.
Yeah, and it, and it's, and it's not fair to our guys to take the part that they like to do away from them and give that to somebody else and have them doing the daily grunt work type stuff. It's fun, I'm assuming, to design a roundabout.
It is, but my, my biggest concern here is if we were gonna, at this point in the game, if we were gonna give more work to Garver, Crafton Toll, or any other design firm, the things that we could give them right now are things that it just doesn't make sense to hire out. Things like plan review and permitting and inspection, those are really expensive things to hire out because of the fact that they don't have any institutional knowledge on what goes on in the City of Conway.
All right, let me ask all this, are you done, I'm sorry?
I'm doing, I know I am.
Let me ask all this in a different way, you said that Garver's designing about half of the Central Landing redevelopment?
That's right.
Is that because we don't have the staff to do it ourselves, so we basically outsourced it?
Well, yes, and, and to be clear, even if we were at full staff, we wouldn't have had the staff on hand to do all of it.
Okay.
We, we took on, you know, last year, early last year was when the decision was made. It was before I came on, it was before I took over for Mr. Hall, really, when the decision was made how much we were gonna farm out, how much we were gonna do in-house. That was before I took over and vacated my old position and before David Vondren left. And so now we're, we're in a position where. And so now, we're, we're in a position where things just aren't getting done. People that call our office, just, we don't have time to talk to them. Plans aren't getting reviewed, permits aren't getting signed.
Okay, so let me follow up on that. Basically, we, we're at least two positions short. Your old position and David Vondren's old position, they're unfilled.
Right.
All right? And because those two are unfilled, you're telling me that, that we've got people submitting things that they want to build and we're telling them, "Sorry, we're too busy to look at it"?
Well, that has been kind of a concern for a long time. If you talk to the planning department, there's been, getting a little out of my area of expertise here, I might need my history teacher, but it's, there's been discussion for some time about hiring somebody to do plan review, and that would be what they do. Most, a lot of other municipalities have somebody on staff that just does plan review, and we don't have that person. I know Mr. Hall's, Mr. Hall has felt for some time that that person ought to be hired by the planning department. And the project engineer that I added, one of the first things I did in the 2015 budget, that was the person that I hired to do plan review, 'cause I saw, I decided to stop fighting that fight with the planning department and go ahead and hire that first.
Let me ask it another way.
To answer your question, yes.
All right, let me ask it another way.
I'm getting complaints well up to my office about that very issue.
So if, if we're, if we are unable to fill these two positions, yours, old one, and Finley, and David Vondren's old one, if we're unable to fill those for whatever reason, what, what does that mean over the next twelve months, twenty-four months? I mean, what, I mean, what does that mean? I mean, we don't have them now, so if we don't, if we don't get them for whatever reason, what happens? I mean, does, does some stuff come to a complete stop? I mean, do we keep, is it just lesser for service or no service?
You wanna, you wanna take this, or I can take it?
Well, no, I'm, Ted, you tell me.
Okay.
Why don't you go ahead?
It's, it's, um, number one, Ronnie Hall leaves. He's, he was staying with us to finish out these central landing projects and the, the Loop bid, which the Loop's gonna bid, that's probably the last of the things we do in September. Okay, with the last thing we're gonna bid, what is that? Local projects.
Probably the central landing boulevard in, toward the end of September.
Okay, so we really have four projects we're watching here. But at some point, the major work's gonna be done, he's gonna retire. So now we've got one full-time engineer, and we've got a engineering intern who is due to get his P.E. at any time. So if we can't fill these two positions, I'll let Finley pick up from there, but we may not even be able to keep the P.E. Since, once he has his engineering degree, he's a much more marketable property at that point, in terms of the workload and getting things done and how it impacts our projects, which then become less outwardly visible and more inwardly visible in terms of street projects that we want done, working through the normal processes of approval for, for engineering at the landfill, engineering in the planning department, engineering in street building, the normal workload, I think, is, is, I think what David's getting at.
Well, my hope moving forward is that we can have enough engineers on, on staff just at least to design the work that we build in-house. Most municipalities don't build their own streets.
But, but-
Yes.
If you don't have them, if you don't fill those two positions-
Right, if we don't fill those two positions, then we would probably have to start hiring consultants to design work that we're, not only for the streets that are gonna be bid out, but also for the streets that we're gonna build, bid ourselves. Which is not-
And consultants come at a higher price than our own staff?
Yeah, but that, it's a, it's, it's particularly more expensive to hire a consultant to do some, to design a street that we're gonna build, because we're paying for a level of ex-
Right.
For a level of, uh, plan document that is not necessary since we're not bidding it out. They, I already, I already have a lot of complaints from citizens that call and can't get ahold of anybody to talk to and, and developers that aren't getting their plans reviewed in a timely manner, and those things will continue to exacerbate.
I mean, any, any department, any business, any entity can survive a short time with understaffing, but long-term, it just doesn't work. And we may be to the point where short-term is becoming long-term.
I think that's true, and there, there are other things that kinda happen on an annual basis. For instance, every year, we've gotta submit a sizable report to A.D.E.Q. to keep our permit. I don't have anybody on staff right now that can do that. So there are other things that, that are gonna track that would hit a crisis point.
Who's your floodplain administrator?
Me.
It was Ronnie. So it's, there's a lot of work that we ask of our engineering department. And, um, we're struggling right now.
I don't really have, I don't really have the time to inspect. When a, when a private site goes through development review, I'm supposed, and they ask for a certificate of occupancy, I'm supposed to go out and inspect that site to make sure everything's done right? I don't have the time to do that.
Was as big of an issue as, I hate to overplay it, but, I mean, we, we have issues of water. We have water issues in the city. I hate to call it flooding, 'cause I mean, we, we don't have some floods other places have. I mean, someone would call it flooding. We have water issues in a lot of places in town. And for us not to be able to have that high on our priority list to make sure that's done right is, is not acceptable.
I agree. And this, this boils down to, this is always tough, particularly when you have to highlight one group and pull out and do something special for them rather than take a whole citywide approach to our, our pay scales. But we did finally, as of just January first, get all our pay scales up to where they should be. But we're having a problem here. And that problem's been going on for a year, probably going on back before that year, based on who we had apply, you know, to our positions, you know, for years previous. And it's, it's, it's coming home to roost now. So that's why we're pushing this. And we can, we can look at it, we can not act, you know, whatever. It's not going away. This issue's not.
I think part of the problem I'm having with all, is, is how it's presented. Not that, I, I agree there's a problem, and we need to address it. But what this kinda looked like when I first read it was, we have all these positions, everybody's gonna get a raise, there's new positions, there's vacancies, but I'm not sure which of one of these are vacant. And, and so it was very confusing just to kinda wrap my head around what was going on. I think that's what's causing, I think, a lot of questions-
Sure.
And a lot of concern about what's, so by approving this, are we approving raises in new positions?
No.
See, I can't tell by looking at this what you're asking.
Not approving new positions. What we're doing is we're approving-
Because right now, you're the city engineer and the director.
That's correct.
And this shows two separate, so to my mind, that's two new positions.
Well, what we're doing is we've got three positions that are, that are vacant.
You should've started with that, I think, you know?
Perhaps so.
And maybe just said, "And this is what we'd like to offer them, and because we're offering these, this is what we need to do for Finley." I think that would've been a lot simpler.
What we're saying, and this is kinda the point that, to answer Theo's question too, is we've got three positions, we're naming five possible targets to plug those three positions in, or whatever the number of targets is. And we don't know. For example, we would like to get a traffic engineer hired, so that Finley can focus on other things. If that's not in the skillset that we get our hands on through applications-
Why would somebody apply to be a traffic engineer if they're not qualified to be a traffic engineer?
I, I haven't had anybody apply.
Okay, that's a different question.
My point is, is that if no one does, we won't hire a traffic engineer.
Right.
Finley, well, it'll be part of his job description, he'll drop down and do some traffic engineering. And we'll hire other positions to do things, because he can't do those 'cause he's doing traffic engineering. We'll hire somebody else to plug that gap. So that's why we're trying to be more flexible in where you plug somebody in based on who's applying.
He'll give up a few hats he's wearing, we just don't know which hats yet, 'cause we don't know who's gonna take them in hats.
That's a way of putting it, yes, that's a way of putting it.
My thing is, if we, if, if you need-
But we still have to post?
If you need someone for a position, hire someone for that position. Don't try to, that's why we gotta overlap, because people can't do their job. We gotta get somebody else hired to help them do the job. If they're gonna be a traffic engineer, let's hire a traffic engineer. Don't hire somebody that's not qualified and get some, have to pay somebody else to help them do that job.
We haven't done that.
I'm saying, I said, let's, don't do that.
We're not going to.
So let's try to fill these two positions that you said that's open, or three.
There's three. He wants two, you know, for sure. There's three open.
One would help.
One would help.
One would help.
And it'd be even more pressing when Ronnie steps down.
Why don't we, why don't we?
So should we not just look at the three positions specifically that he's wanting to fill and look at some type of salary for those three at this time and let, let that be a done deal and then anything else come back?
And let you go look.
I mean, I'm like, Shelley, we've got all this here, so it's kinda mind-boggling. And I mean, if you're saying you've got an engineer intern and you look at that salary, but you're wanting to move them, they're gonna fall in under a staff engineer, and I'm looking at the qualifications for a staff engineer as versus an intern, and it's saying four years of related management experience and or training, so is an intern gonna have that?
Let me answer that question for you. Uh, I will say, those are, the descriptions on that spreadsheet were developed by the Johansson group.
And so was the salary.
Right. That's correct.
So, if they can't meet what the requirements are, then where do you get the proposed salary?
Well, one of the problems that I have is that the positions that are posted right now all require an engineering license. But I really am not getting any qualified candidates. The vast majority of the candidates that I've gotten have been unlicensed engineers. This would give me the ability to go ahead and hire an unlicensed engineer and put them in that position, because that might be all I can get.
And I, I understand totally what you're saying, but I guess where I'm looking at this, in our employment skillset, when we set a salary, they have to meet the requirements. So if you're saying the requirements, they don't have to meet it, then why are we paying, looking at a proposed salary?
I'm not, I'm not saying that at all.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, my goal here is to not have to hire somebody, 'cause the, the position I'm in right now is that if I want help, I'd have to hire somebody that's unqualified. And I don't wanna hire somebody that's unqualified and pay them more than they deserve and, and then train them until the point that they are qualified and then they leave and go somewhere else. Uh, I'd rather be able to pay them an accurate amount for the job description that they are qualified for.
Right.
Yeah, I don't think we can just do the three, because if we just did the three that were underneath, you know, Dave were talking about this, that were underneath him, you know, and say we bump up the traffic engineer, the staff engineer, and the project manager, the traffic engineer could potentially be making more than he is now, so why would he not just leave his job, go to the traffic engineer, do half, or not half, but do less the work, but get paid, paid more? So, I don't think we can just bump up just those three, 'cause then it's gonna offset-
I don't think we need to bump up any of them. I think we need to just hire someone, that's me.
What do you think they've been trying to do?
Well, you just said not to hire somebody unqualified. You're only gonna get them unqualified at that price.
My understanding that, that he was going to hire the best engineers and then put them in a position, is that not-
I'd, yeah, I'd like to find the three best candidates and put them in the position that, and that they are qualified for.
Not three of these positions that you need, you need them all?
Well, it-
A lot of the problem is, there's a shortage of engineers. There's four of us retiring than there are graduating from school.
Well, stop it.
It's your fault. It's your fault.
No, I put two through school. And they're making more money than I was when I retired.
And asking him questions.
But that's the basic problem, is you don't know who you're gonna find available for filling these positions.
So, that, that's why I'm saying, we, we need to create more positions, 'cause we would love to hire at the highest level, but if we don't, we can still pay somebody at a lower level without coming back to you and rech, and re-changing the pay for that position. So it gives us more flexibility. If you wanna set a rigid salary in, then we'll try to find someone that meets those job descriptions, but we may be coming back to you and adjusting it. Because we're driven by who's applying and who will accept our pay at a certain level.
Okay, let me ask you something. We're having problems right now with payroll. So how is this gonna affect that, if we hire all these people?
It sweetens the deal and makes the job more attractive to those people who are qualified.
I understand that. I'm talking about how, how's that gonna affect the pay of them? Not sweeten the deal, as I go-
It's gonna take the street department monies, it's gonna take more of it if we pay a higher salary.
I don't think we have a payroll problem in my department.
We don't?
Matter of fact, I got, I got quite a bit, since I have so many vacancies, I've got quite a bit of surplus. I've got, well, I don't remember the number, but there's a surplus in the full-time employees' salary budget.
If you've not had two, if you've not had two engineers, you've got salary left. Three engineers, you've got salary left.
Two, 'cause Ronnie Hall's getting one of them.
I mean, I don't particularly-
He's in the budget as well, as a part-time engineer.
That's right.
Right.
I mean, I don't particularly like necessarily carving out one department from others and doing what we're looking at here, but, you know, if, let's just be frank about it, if Finley didn't get some relief, we're gonna be looking for the department head pretty soon, 'cause he's gonna find greener pastures.
That's true, there, there are other groups looking for traffic engineers. He is a traffic engineer.
Yeah. Anyway, we know it's a difficult, and we could've presented it in a different, different fashion.
Yeah, yeah.
It just, this is, we're not sure which way this cat needed to be skinned, and obviously, we skinned it a way that's not the easiest to understand. It's, it starts with this need, that we are not attracting qualified candidates, and we've gotta find a way to sweeten the deal and that's sweeten the range of positions that we're not gonna entirely populate, but it gives us some, some opportunity to, to hire somebody based on their skillset.
So when you post these, do you just say, "I'm just looking for an engineer"? Or how do you-
That would be the way that nearly every other engineering job in the state would be posted.
So it's not specific to a particular position?
Well, it may, it may stay, the, most municipalities would say, they're looking for a civil engineer, and they would list some of the job duties that are necessary, and probably, I'm sorry?
And the requirements.
Yes, uh, it, I would, I would require, either require or not require of an engineering license, that's kinda the most basic thing. They may say that there are certain numbers of years of experience required or preferred.
Right, right.
And it would, but they're, the motin, mostly it would come down to, they would need to be able to, to have a grasp of roadway design, drainage design, plan review.
Do you kinda look at the overlapping things, perhaps?
Yes, and then the majority of these jobs would say salary depended upon experience.
So if we were to approve a range tonight for, at least to get one position going and see how that goes, would that be helpful? I'm trying to get him some relief as quickly as possible. And so, knowing that, knowing that we're gonna have to come back and address-
I'd be, I'd be willing to take a look at one. I'd be willing to take a look at one tonight.
It's somewhere between the bottom and the, I don't know. You know, somewhere between, help, help me here, guys. Seventy to-
Where?
Ninety. You know, the seventy to ninety thousand dollar range or something. And then I think that gives us a better indication of other issues we have to address once we kinda see what the market's bearing. I mean, that's a true market test of what you, you would be able to negotiate.
Well-
Would that be helpful? I mean, and if it's not, say it.
It certainly wouldn't hurt, but I think that the, I think the true market test is the highway department grid. It certainly wouldn't hurt, but I think that the, I think the true market test is the highway department grid, and that's what, I mean, he said it, that's, they're the largest employer of engineers of the state. I've offered the job to three people. Uh, one of them was a highway department employee, and he, he said, "I'm gonna make more money here," and he turned it down.
Would, well, okay, direct question then. Would this range give you enough salary room to compete with his salary, the one you talked about, to make him come?
I believe so.
The seventy to ninety?
Seventy to ninety was what I was kinda looking at.
Well, the, the problem with that is that, um, if someone, this guy knew that if he stayed at the department for another ten years, he'd be making six figures. Uh, I don't need to be able to offer that.
Yeah.
But I need to be able to offer that he, if he sticks around, he's gonna be making more. That's what I-
Is someone you know?
Pardon?
Is someone you know?
I know him now. I didn't know him before.
I, I just, I just can't get my, my head wrapped around the idea that we, only people we can hire is somebody that's working for the highway department.
I've offered the job to two new graduates, and I've had four, four applicants that I, that were civil engineers, and I've offered the job to three of them. Uh, one of them was a highway department employee. He turned it down. One of, and two of them were new graduates, and they both turned it down. Uh, one of them left the state to go somewhere else, and one of them went to Garver.
Well, if we're gonna go Shelley's route, I'd at least like to expand it from one to two, knowing that we have two positions that used to be filled. Now, there's a new one that you haven't filled ever, but there's two, Finley's old one and David's, that have never been refilled, so we at least know we need those two to even get back to where it used to be.
I'm okay with that. I'm just trying to get you some relief and get you some, I don't want this to drag out another month while you're struggling. Your department, I don't mean you, but.
Right.
Now, what I'm hearing, let, let, let me just make sure I'm understanding this correctly, is let's authorize, and we can draft it up for y'all's approval, two positions to be, the range of hiring range
Right.
is seventy to ninety, and it's only for the purposes of hiring.
Correct.
Okay? Because we have a one-salary system for everybody else, and whatever we hire them in at,
Right.
we need to keep true to that, and that's the salary they're gonna stay at until anybody else gets a cost of living raise.
Right.
Okay? So that's, that's how we manage it. So it's only for the purposes of hiring. Those two positions, seventy to ninety thousand, and it's just, we hire them as, as needed.
Wherever their skill set fits best for you.
And that, but then their salary would be fixed upon employment, correct?
Right.
Okay, yeah.
But then, I guess the next, second step to this is coming back to us to, to adjust any other apparent inequities, especially as pertains to Finley.
Well, we also have, you know, inequities on our engineering intern. That's being adjusted.
Right, and, okay, yeah, but, but I think this, that at least, instead of playing with, we don't know which position and how much, and, you know, we, you'd come back to us and say, "Okay, this is what it took for me to hire in these two positions." Based on real market value and, and all that. And then I think it gives us a better idea of how to address the other two.
It does, and, and, and I don't, I don't mind doing that. It, it does, um, it's, it does, it doesn't solve the problem that there's no opportunity for advancement. Um, and that is a concern amongst everyone that has applied. Uh, but I'm, I'm fine to do that if that's, if that's the council's wish.
I mean, it, it's a step forward, but I, I do agree with Finley, is that part of the reason is that we might offer, o- offer comparable salary right now, but we don't offer a career path. You know, successive layers, not just of increased salary, but increased responsibility. And that's why we, you know, we had those job descriptions moving up, cuz we, we could assign, it's basically, I think Ronnie put it this way, it's how much review time the supervisor has to give the lower engineer? Is, if that's something that, that, you know, the chief engineer can turn over to an engineer and not have to worry about it prior to bid, that's a more valuable engineer than somebody to look over their shoulder all the time. So that, that kind of career, uh, moving up is just what we don't have.
And, and I think it's something we can look at in the future. I'm just trying to get you some immediate and, and take some, what I hope are positive steps in the right direction for the street department.
Okay, but at this time, no discussing, th- this, this motion does not discuss, uh, any of the two existing positions.
I would like to, uh, to put the advanced engineer intern in this mix at this point in time because he's not far from getting his ticket, uh, that's going to make him a marketable commodity, and we-
So when he gets his ticket, would he not be able to fit into some of these?
He would fit into another one. He would fit into, into a different one, yeah, but I, I think he's, Finley, you might address that particular point as far as Jack is concerned, and do we need to meet an executive session if we're gonna talk about specific people?
Yes, I would say I'd be probably more polite.
I think it would. I think it would.
In terms of setting salary?
Yeah.
You know, job assessment, yes. Setting salary, no.
No.
We do that publicly.
Okay, okay. Then, if you could address-
If I don't answer your question, let me know, but, um, I think that, I think that the problem you're suggesting is gonna be a problem for any candidate that I hire that's young. And that problem is that their salary may be competitive now, but it won't be competitive once they have more experience if the salary is set, because they were always, if we have one set salary for a person, then it's inevitable that there will come a time where they're more valuable to somebody else than they are to us.
I hired Finley. He was too interested in what he would be making now, for what he would be making when he got my position.
I got you.
So they're gonna be looking at his salary for their future, for their future income.
Understand.
Okay, we have a motion and second? You don't?
What is it?
What's the motion? Well, we're making it.
Okay, I, I think I can.
Go ahead.
Y'all can, correct me. Uh, to authorize Finley to proceed with a search to fill two vacant engineer positions.
We, we're doing that. I'd say shape it like, um, that we'll authorize the pay for two engineering positions. Shape it like that.
Okay, the, the salary pay for two engineering positions in the seventy to ninety thousand dollar range.
For hiring purposes.
For hiring purposes, and that, once they're filled, assuming you're successful, they, that it come, that you come back to us so that we can address any other inequities within the department.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion. Probably the best thing we can do at this point.
Yeah.
May I ask a question?
Still, yes.
Uh, so I presume, presumably, before I would hire either one of these two people, I would need to come back to the council to get their salary approved.
Nope.
If it's between that range, that's up to you. So you can come back and say, "They both cost me ninety thousand dollars."
Okay.
No, we would also like you to get very specific in terms of your job descriptions.
Right.
So you have that.
All right.
So, I mean, that's, that's gonna be the negotiable, that'll move with the salary range.
Okay, okay.
As soon as he fill, he's asking, "When will we do it?" And I said, "As soon as you make those offers and they're accepted, I think immediately come back and let us know," and then I think that's what we need to address.
The, the only problem with that is that, uh, if I, if I did find a new graduate that I wanted to hire, then I'm gonna be paying them a lot more than they're worth.
If they had other, their PE?
No, I'm saying if I, if I, if I-
He's gonna bring him in higher because you know you can't bump him up later.
Well, there's that problem as well. Uh, I mean, but you're, what you're doing for me is you're, you're narrowing the available market of people because now I, and unless I wanna hire somebody right out of college and pay them more than Jack day one.
Right.
It's said this, cuz it-
We're, we're not touching that position.
Right, that's what I'm saying. I have, the, which-
These are somebody that hasn't, but what the-
I guess I could hire them in at the existing position, I guess.
You could hire them in as, if they don't have their PE, I would recommend hiring them in at this, at this suggested position.
Okay.
I would say they have to have their PE.
I've only had one civil engineer apply that has a PE, and that's my concern, but we can try it this way. That's fine. This is-
Well, let me ask you, how, how much, how much were you able to offer somebody who turned you down?
How much?
How, how much currently were you, were you able to offer?
How much was I able to offer?
Yes.
Uh, around seventy, high sixties to low seventies, or the, the project engineer and-
So what I would see here is you've got some leeway that if, just like in any job, if you've got somebody with some measurable experience, it's worth, on the higher side of that grid range, if you've got somebody no experience but has a PE, it's maybe the lower side of that grid, and you know, you, you'll use your judgment to try to find the best applicant at the right price.
And, and, but, you know, I thought, I think we, it does give some flexibility in this category of engineer.
Yeah, because obviously, if we, if we just limited it to mid-seventies, you're gonna get nothing but new college graduates. But we might attract somebody with some experience if they can pay me the eighties, and maybe that's the best thing to do.
And that's in the range of the proposed salary for people with PEs.
But let me, let me tell you what, what the problem is. It doesn't touch the stuff that doesn't have the PE. And, and that's, that's fine. We can accept this, but it kinda pegs a number in limbo too, in that the next question is what the salary would be, so he could offer something comparable. Say, "What's the career ladder look like?"
Well-
Haven't got that set.
Well, yeah, that's, that's something we're not addressing, unfortunately.
Not gonna address that, yeah.
But now, didn't I just hear y'all say we needed somebody with a PE? We're getting, I thought that's what we needed.
We want the PE. We want the PE.
Okay, so I mean, that, this salary will hopefully attract that. I mean, I-
Oh, no, no question. It does that, but it doesn't, it, it's, it gets us a base hit. It doesn't get us home yet.
Yeah, but I mean, I, I don't want you to hire somebody without a PE. You're telling me that's what you need, and that's what it better come back with.
Yeah, the, the, the thing is that, like Mr. Hall said, the, the new available graduates are, don't have PEs yet. Three of the, two of the three people I've offered the job to already don't have a PE, and the reason, and those are the people that were available on the job market. The reason they turned it down is because they don't have a career track.
Okay, are, are those people though qualified for what you're looking for without a PE?
It's the best I could get.
But are they qualified for what you need?
It's better than nothing, but no.
No. The, you've had one guy apply with a PE.
Yeah.
Okay.
And maybe, maybe with this, we'll have more applicants with a PE, maybe.
I mean, you know better than us what you need, and you know what it's gonna take to get them. I just wanna make sure you, we get what we're paying for, and you get what you need.
Any other discussion?
Are we addressing the intern?
Nope, we're not. The motion does not. No, we can add later, but this motion does not.
Let me, let me say, I'm gonna say one more thing that I, I don't think I was very clear. I apologize. I think my best shot at hiring a good candidate is getting somebody that's young, possibly right out of school, but giving them the promise of a good career, and that's what I can't do right now, and this doesn't offer me that. It does offer me the avail- availability to maybe find somebody with a PE. And maybe I can find that, but I'm less hopeful that I'll find that now than I will a good, strong, new graduate. That's what I was trying to say. I'm not trying to, not trying to, okay.
Now, a, a new college graduate without a PE would, you would probably be able to hire somebody though with the skills you need to help in these areas, and that person presumably would be working towards a PE? I mean, that's something people in that, that strive for?
Presumably, he would be working for a PE, towards a PE.
Obviously, but you, or she, thank you very much. But you, I mean, you won't hire somebody who won't, who does not have the skill set to help you. That's obvious, whether PE or not.
No, the question is whether or not they currently have it or can be trained to have it.
Okay, but these two, this range of positions, we won't be hiring someone without a PE.
That's correct.
Not for those two positions.
No.
This'll be someone, those two positions would be for somebody that has a PE.
That's correct.
Let me ask you this, Finley, and this is maybe muddying the water even more. I hear what you're saying about you need an engineer, and I hear what you're saying about the cost set, but I also hear the underlying of someone could probably perform the job duties that may not have the PE that might be a likely candidate as well. Would it be better, a better fit for you at this time to maybe have the salary that Shelley suggested for someone who is an engineer, and then possibly some other salary range for someone who may not have the PE but could do the skill set? Would that be more beneficial to you to negotiate at this point?
That probably would be helpful because it would give me a broader range to hire within. Yes.
Okay, now, actually, that's, that is a good thought.
Yes.
Okay.
I do agree with that, but, but that's also gonna bring in the current salary position of our engineering intern. Cuz you can't bring somebody in doing the same job, actually bring a brand-new in, doing what the current engineering intern's doing for less.
But I do think that that opens an opportunity for the intern that we currently have.
Then he can move up into that.
Right. Yes, mm-hmm.
And then we still don't have anybody helping, cuz otherwise, that, that other position's still paid below the position you just fixed. See what I'm saying?
Somebody tell me what the intern does. He's worked part-time, he's going to college while he's doing this. What, what do you mean by intern?
It's kind of a misnomer.
Yeah.
Uh, the, the word intern is just the word that's given to a civil engineering graduate while he's working towards his engineering license. He's required to get, the first thing he's required to get is his engineer intern certificate. And he gets that presumably right around the time he graduates. He holds that certificate for four years and works underneath a licensed engineer, at which time he's, uh, he's able to sit for his engineering license, and that's when he gets his PE.
So it's like an apprenticeship.
Yeah, exactly.
So now, how much longer until he is done with the intern label?
The existing?
Yes.
About a year.
Twelve months.
Okay. So, but he's not eligible now to be bumped up to a different job duty or title for more pay now?
With, with the existing titles that, with, with, none of this, but with the existing titles we have? No.
Okay, so he's not yet ready to fill a, a better need, a bigger need for our department?
That's correct.
Okay.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Yet.
But Finley, if we looked at the advanced engineer intern that's proposed on here,
Yes.
would that not be a viable move for a current intern?
Yes, it would.
And I think that was my point. But then if this intern moves up, would the, you would still need, are you saying you would still need an additional intern? I guess my point is just this. I understand what you're saying, and I understand the required hours. It's basically the same thing when we look at our level of therapist, and they have to have required hours when they're an intern before they can sit four boards and get their licensure. I mean, maybe I'm missing the point, but if we approve the advanced engineer intern, that's going to be where our intern is going to. So that would leave that position, that would allow them to move into a position. You've got somebody who's been there, done the job, has seen how things work, and then you have an engineer, which is what you're telling me that you need. So then that would give you those two positions.
No, not, not quite. You're basically bumping one up, paying him more, but it's not doing anything different. If what, 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 you've got four people, you got the top and the bottom filled, you're missing two in the middle for a full PE. Okay, what you suggested, which I think's, you know, a, a good idea, gives him more flexibility, is taking one of those two in the middle instead of mandating it being a full PE, going with that advanced engineering intern.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, which is great.
Mm-hmm.
And you think you can move Jack, your engineering intern, up to that advanced engineering intern. Great. You still have two people. Now, you've hired the full PE, what do you pay this guy when you backfill that position?
But that was my question for him. Do you have to have an intern?
The only reason you have an intern is you're trying to grow an engineer, paying higher engineers. So you're trying to train one.
Mm-hmm.
And so what you really want is an engineer, but all you can afford, or all you can hire is an intern. So your, the, the goal is to get an engineer, not an intern.
I understand, and that's what I'm saying.
My point to you is, when you're hiring, if you raise the current intern to the advanced engineering intern, okay, you've gotta backfill this position to give you any advantage at all in your hiring. Got that?
Okay.
So do you hire this person at? Low with the current intern's making, or do you hire him to the higher position? In other words, we are, we are, either we don't raise him to that vacant, now vacant position to the higher advanced intern position, or we do and we're affecting current.
So basically, what you're saying is if we did that, then we would need to approve three positions, which is ultimately what he was saying in the beginning, or three-
What I'm saying is, by doing that and moving the current guy into that higher intern position, we're raising the, the position's pay.
Well, I'm happy to amend my motion to allow that to happen. Should that be what Finley decides to do and provide some flexibility there. Um, and if that is the decision you make as the department head, and we have a vacant engineering intern, come back to us with that. At the same time, we're gonna address other inequities, and we'll take care of it.
Okay, let me see what you mean.
That makes sense.
Advanced engineering intern, so you would, you would take one of those staff positions and make it possible flex-
Give him the flexibility to make that, yes.
Flex down to take that. That would not automatically move our current engineering intern up.
That's his choice as supervisor.
Then what do we do to backfill the current engineering intern's position?
If he does decide to hire and, and promote that person, whoever, into that, when he has to come back to address the other inequities, bring that intern position back.
Right.
And we can address the salary.
No, I was, I was good with the hiring the two PEs.
Me too.
Okay, I mean, basically, you're giving the intern a promotion or raise. That's what it sounds like.
No, I'm giving Finley the option of hiring two PEs or depending on the candidates and things he gets, the flexibility to take one of them and do an advance.
Change that to an advanced intern.
And a PE. That's, he may get plenty of candidates and hire in two PEs, which in my ideal world would be great.
If he wants to, they can hire one PE and then advance his assistant.
Or, or hire somebody new in as an advanced engineering intern, or have the option of promoting. I mean, that's, that's his job as a supervisor. It's not, I'm trying to give you the flexibility you need to get the help you need.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that.
Well, I'm a little confused on that part though. I mean, what, is the intern qualified to do more now?
Do more than, than what?
Than what he's doing now.
Is he qualified to be an advanced engineer intern?
According, yes.
Yes, he is now.
Well, I mean, I don't understand what good it does to promote him. You still need two new people to do work. Whether, I don't care what you call the intern or how much you pay him, you still need two people to do your more advanced work. So to me, it's two separate deals.
I think it, I think it can be tied together.
Well, can be, I mean, it doesn't have to be.
That's just my thought on that.
Yeah. I honestly think we can sit here and debate this probably through half the night.
We already have.
Yeah, exactly. So, I mean, I guess I'm fine with what Shelley's looking at doing. It gives him the flexibility to move someone who is a current intern who would have some skill set. I mean, most interns, that's what they do. They come in, they observe, they learn, they get the experience. So that gives him the opportunity to do that. And then he's saying he needs an engineer. That gives him the opportunity to, to hire an engineer. I mean, you've got a department head, he's got the flexibility to either do two, two engineers, if that's what he needs, or he has the flexibility to hire an engineer and someone who can move into an advanced intern position.
So it's not two new engineers and an advancement?
No.
It's one and then a.
And then if that doesn't work, yes, it's either or.
But that gives him the two people he needs for help.
It forces him to come back to us and meet them.
Exactly.
Well, and then we're gonna give him another one. And then that's fine. So why, I mean, either do all of it now or just, I don't know. Make the motion this way.
I'm with you, I'm with you. Actually, we don't have a motion right now, because the second went away. So we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second.
And this is on the amended?
Yes.
This is nothing, pardon?
This is amended?
Yes.
We have a brand-new motion second, because the previous second went away. So this is, this is to approve a range of seventy to ninety on an intern or on a full PE?
Yes.
And then a second one, it could be seventy to ninety on a full PE or for an advanced engineering intern, do you wanna create a, just say this range right here? Forty-six to seventy-two?
Yes.
Yes.
I got one question and I'm done with this.
That's the motion, is that the second?
Yes.
Okay.
Is the intern gonna be a PE when he's promoted? Because you said you needed two positions that were PE's. Will he be a PE when you promote him to this position?
Not probably, you're right.
No, an advanced intern is an EL certification.
That were PE's.
And that's what he's gonna try to find.
That's what he's gonna try and find. It gives him.
Now, I understand that. I said, will he be promoted if he's not a PE?
Under this, he can be. If he won't be promoted to a PE position, he'll be promoted to that advanced.
Advanced engineer, yeah.
Okay, but it won't, that won't, we can't give him a PE. That's the engineering licensing board, or whatever you call it.
That's good enough.
Mm-hmm.
Is everybody clear on the motion?
Yes.
Yes. Kind of a.
Two options.
Kind of a temporary holding position, just to see what that does. Changes our bait a little bit. Any other discussion?
Our discussion on this motion now. I'm gonna vote no on this motion, because I'd like to see us just give him the authority to hire two new engineers to help with that need. So that's why we'll vote no on this. If it fails, we'll come back with a different motion.
I agree, David, I feel the same way.
Any other discussion?
No, I'm confused. I thought that that's kinda what it was, but it could either be one or the other.
But if he hires one new engineer and promotes his other guy, he's gonna come back in a couple of months saying, I need another engineer. And that's, all I've heard is he needs two new engineers. Doesn't need to promote the guy who's already helping him to do, and nothing against the intern. We'll work on that, that's great, we'll work on that. But if he needs two new people, he doesn't need to promote one and hire one more new. He needs two new people.
Remember, I'm going away out there now.
He needs two P, two PE's.
He needs two people.
But I thought your motion said that we could move, if we, the engineer bumping up doesn't count as one. It's just moving the engineer up and hiring another one.
We're talking, there's two flexible positions that are covered by this motion. One of them will be an engineer, a PE, okay? The other one could be engineering intern bumping up to a higher-paid intern.
Oh, but it doesn't, so they can't add another, like another intern?
Then the intern is vacant.
Then the, then the plain intern, but it's paid low again.
And Baudrillard's position's still vacant.
Right.
But if we vote your way, then that means they can't advance the intern. I guess that's something.
Or hire in an advanced.
But he's still working, doing work. And if we need to address that, we'll address that. But I just keep hearing he needs two new bodies, to replace two bodies that are no longer there.
Between seventy and ninety thousand, no. That's what I'm for.
Well, that's part B, but part A is you need two bodies.
That's for that one.
And I'm okay with that. I was trying to.
That's not the motion though.
Okay, wait, wait, since I made the motion. I was trying to address the flexibility that Finley was asking for.
I heard him ask for two new bodies. And maybe that's where he'll end up. But I'd rather be, make it a little more narrow that we get two new bodies.
Folks, we got a motion and a second.
Question.
Okay? Just, just to make sure you understand what we're doing here. None of us are engineers. And we're trying to set up a pay scale and structure for a department we don't know anything about.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? We're looking, we're looking at this without the skill set to set it up.
Yes.
Okay? Just be aware we're doing that. This is, this is a classic camel designed by a committee situation. Okay? Motion and second. There's been a question called. Does everybody, is everybody okay calling a question and moving to vote on this right now?
Sure.
Yes.
Okay. We'll put the motion on the, on the vote. All in favor of this motion of authorizing these two pay scale enhancements for these two positions? One of those positions having the option of going with a PE or going with an advanced engineering intern. But really just two positions. All in favor of that signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, let's have a show of hands. All in favor, raise your hand. Three? All opposed?
Four.
Four, I'm sorry. Four? I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say no. I don't think this really addresses the issue properly.
Four to three?
It's four to three though.
He voted. He voted.
It's four to three. Four doesn't win.
Four doesn't win.
Five wins.
Four's a non-starter.
I'll make a motion that we allow Finley to hire two new positions in that range of seventy to ninety.
Second. Motion and second. Any more discussion?
With PE?
Yeah, our two bodies in that range for what he can get. I mean.
Seventy to ninety, but they have to meet those criteria.
They have to be able to give him the help he needs.
Hey, PE or not?
I'm not an engineer. Can't hire who he needs the help for. But he needs two new bodies, is all I've heard, and this gives him two new bodies.
Okay, so he'll have to be able to come back to us and justify who he hired and why at that salary. Okay, based on their skill set.
Mm-hmm.
That comes with a warning.
Which is?
Okay, that's a no motion. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
All right.
Very good.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
And we don't wanna touch this again, just to make sure. We don't wanna touch this again until he hires somebody.
And then we'll look at the other salaries in the department.
What if we don't hire anybody? How long do you wanna go before we?
That's a nightmare.
Where do we advertise, where do you advertise for an engineer?
We advertise in the Arkansas Department of Labor. We've advertised on the municipal website. We've advertised on all the side offices.
Is there an engineering website?
I've advertised on the Arkansas chapter of the American Society for Civil Engineers website. I've advertised on my LinkedIn page. Let everybody I know know that we're hiring, but all the other municipalities are hiring too, because they don't pay enough either.
I mean, I'm just thinking, maybe somebody might like to come to a progressive college town.
One would hope.
You'd be surprised if it doesn't attract as many people as you'd think.
Lisa, what's the normal time we leave positions posted? Is there a minimum requirement? Is there?
We tried one for seven days, but this one's been posted since I believe the last year.
Wow.
I mean, supply and demand. Like I said, we're not engineers and not a whole lot of folks out there who are either.
It's on account.
So.
That's a competitive starting salary. If I, if I can't hire it at that, it's only because they're not just looking for a starting salary. They're looking, they wanna know what they're gonna be making in five and 10 years.
I got you.
Okay, very good. If things get down the road and we're not getting any bites or we're getting.
And it can come back.
We'll come back. But we're gonna have to end up, if we're gonna keep a in-house engineering staff, we're gonna have to create a career ladder that works for however many positions we have. And it's probably gonna have to be populated by positions we don't populate with warm bodies. That's probably the only way we can go into hiring practices that makes sense and gives us the salary flexibility and job description flexibility to match who we have available to hire. That said, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Tell them if they hurry, Finley, they can apply for the mayor's job in 2016.
That will most definitely be open.
I thought I'd get a bigger laugh from you than that.
Small crowd.
Tough crowd. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, two hours and 10 minutes into the program.
Okay, no problem, sir. Next up, consideration to remove and dispose of fixed assets from the inventory listing from Parks and Recreation. Mr. Ibbotson has got some various trucks and such.
I just wanna dispose of some inventory and put it on public auction and try to make some money off of it.
Make a motion that we authorize him to dispose of those in that manner.
Motion and second to approve of disposing of these various vehicles with online auction? Any discussion?
I would just like to note that the fact that we still have two pickup trucks that are 20 years old, that are still operating for the city, tells me we do a pretty good job of keeping our fleet running. So thank you to everybody involved in doing that.
Thank you.
Yeah, and unfortunately, 2008, I guess, had a better day.
That's the one with the engine.
We're not. Okay, no other discussion? All in favor of approving disposing of these items off our inventory and disposing of them as suggested, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes seven to zero. The next item is an ordinance amending Title 12 of the Municipal Code, Parks and Recreation for Lake Beereport. Mr. Ibbotson?
This is more of a house cleaning issue. Visited with Chuck's office and Mr. Burnside's here to answer any questions if you have. Trying to clarify lot lines and stuff as they extend out into the lake. And I think it's more of dock where it affects placements of docks with angular property lines coming from other property. And it just clarifies that a little more for the property owners out there. And we'll be pulling the lake down this fall, so we'll have a lot of people looking.
Who'd waive the reading?
Second.
Motion and second to waive the reading. All in favor of waiving the three readings and bringing it forward for action on tonight's agenda, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes seven to zero.
Second.
Motion and second for adoption. Now, this would be ordinance 015.
Yes.
And emergency clause.
Sixty-eight.
Second.
Emergency clause. Discussion?
Well, Mr. Ibbotson, I'll be voting against this because I'm philosophically against private boat docks on public property.
You wanna bang your shoe on the table?
Yes, I will.
You want a treehouse too?
Andy was here.
It's pretty much required of that seed.
You know, it must be, because I'm channeling it. And I think if you build something on public property, it should be open to the public.
If there's no other discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Ms. Whitmore?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
No.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
No.
I got five to two, Mr. Garrett?
Correct.
Very good. That passes in the emergency clause, Mr. Garrett?
Ms. Whitmore?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Yes.
That passes seven to zero. And the next item is following up on some instructions you gave us at our Parks and Recreation retreat the other night. It's consideration for approval of architectural and interior design work to finish out the Expo Event Center out of the fairgrounds. And we have two people that have submitted for us, two actual, you know, two, two folks to do actual different segments of the work. One is by Gayorg Anderson for the conference center interior, the conference center facade to the north, which is the entrance of the facility, and the southwest entrance, maybe even an element of the whole western side facing the parking lot and the midway of the Expo Center, dressing that up for us. And then the coordination of landscaping and driveways and the finish-out of the exterior part of that. That's $45,000, you know, flat fee from Mr. Anderson. And then Rick Sewell, as the architecture, the architectural component of that, will require, take anything that Mr. Anderson comes up with, puts it into the architectural plans that we would then bid out for construction and finish out. His fee is a $10,000 flat fee to start, and then there's a percentage component that's, that's, that's normal in the working of architects and it's part of the contract. And it also revolves reviewing the construction work as it's being done. So those are the two fees for consulting. I will say that Gayorg Anderson's work he has done for us.
At the airport.
Previously, not only at the airport, but City Hall. That's about as good as the City Hall possibly could look. That's, I was accusing.
More than bulldozers.
Because I agree with that totally. But it does, he did make it look a lot better. That, that got him doing work for us at the airport, which has been a huge success and very well-received. And if this is gonna be such an entrance, you know, gateway into the city for people new to the city, and that's how I think it's going to be, having that same type of level of presentation is worth paying this, this interior architect this interior architect from Conway, Arkansas and New York, New York. So I'd like to recommend those two fees and fee structures to you for work and, and beginning to flesh out of the event center at the Conway Expo Center.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion? I think Mr. Hawkins and Ms. Whitmore can tell you that the AMP Commission did accept our hand of reaching out to them for partnership. And they're interested in this project in a big way as well.
Yes.
And, and I don't know if y'all are ready to make and announce that to the general public, but.
Andy can't announce it, he wasn't at the meeting.
I can't, I can't announce it. But I do know what happened. But you go ahead.
Go ahead, then.
The AMP Commission did agree to fund up to $50,000. I mean, I'm sorry, $500,000 for the finishing out specifically to the inside of the Expo Center.
So we do appreciate that. Yeah, I'm glad it's, it's, it's 500 rather than 50.
Yes.
Cut Mr. Anderson right on out.
We couldn't get Mr. Anderson paid, could we?
Exactly. Okay, we do appreciate that partnership there as well. Any discussion here?
Glad I wasn't able to be there.
Yeah.
If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes seven to zero. The next item is a, again, entering into an agreement to provide one fully-equipped community policing officer for the Conway Housing Authority. This is a renewal. I'll let the chief.
And this is something, as you know, we've been doing since the 1990s, I believe, early 1990s. We have an officer assigned to the Conway Housing Authority. They pick up roughly half of the salary. So if we wish to continue with this another year, we'll need to do an agreement with them. Mr. Mayor has a copy of it for his signature.
Make a motion that we enter into this agreement.
Motion and second that we enter into this agreement. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes seven to zero. The next item is consideration to accept the bid for night vision sighting and aiming system for the Conway Police Department SWAT team. Chief?
This is a continuation, if you remember, the last couple of council meetings, we've come here regarding the spending money from a grant to replace equipment for the tactical team. So this is just a continuation of that. We had one bid from ANVS Inc. for $34,193. Again, this is part of a federal grant.
Make a motion that we accept this bid.
Second. Motion and second that we accept this bid. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor of approving this bid, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes seven to zero. And the next item is consideration to approve the Conway Police Department to apply for the 2015 Justice Assistance Grant, JAG grant. Chief?
Again, this is something that we're eligible for every year and we apply for it every year. We have to apply jointly with the Faulkner County Sheriff's Office. It has to be a combined. So we split that grant with them. The total grant's 21,484. Again, we'll get half of that. And again, this year, we will use those, those funds to finish out the purchase of patrol rifle, patrol rifles for the Conway Police Officers. This is, I think this is the third year we've done this and this should equip all of the officers with them. For probably the last, quite a few years, officers had, had to buy their own equipment. And so we started using this JAG grant to pay for those. And again, this is the third year, so I think we will finish out that need this year.
Make a motion that we entertain the police department and the chief into applying for this grant.
Second. Motion and second to approve applying for this justice assistance grant for this purpose? Any, any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.